Docket number 4818.
Zoning docket 4818 is a request for a conditional use to permit a standard restaurant with extended operating hours with live entertainment secondary use in an MU1 medium intensity mixed-use district and the EC enhancement corridor district. The petition's site is located at 2005 North Broad Street. The site is currently occupied by an existing restaurant, and the applicant is seeking a conditional use to permit a restaurant with live entertainment secondary use and extended hours of operation between 12:00 PM and 4:00 AM on Thursdays through Saturdays, between 12:00 PM and 2:00 AM on Sundays through Wednesdays. These hours of operation are later than are normally permitted by the zoning ordinance, which limits hours to between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM on Sundays through Wednesdays, and between 6:00 AM and 12:00 AM on Thursdays through Saturdays, and can be extended through the conditional use process. While extended hours of operation and live music may be acceptable to an extent, given the MU1 district's orientation toward moderately intense commercial uses, this must be balanced against the needs of the surrounding residential area. To achieve this balance, the staff recommends a modified operating schedule between 12:00 PM and 12:00 AM on Sundays through Wednesdays, between 12:00 PM and 2:00 AM on Thursdays through Saturdays, and allowing live entertainment only between 12:00 PM and 2:00 AM on Thursdays through Saturdays. While these restrictions — oh, excuse me. With these restrictions in place, as well as standard use requirements for restaurants and live entertainment secondary use, the restaurant can be made to be compliant with all applicable regulations contained within the comprehensive zoning ordinance. Appropriate management will also minimize its impact. Therefore, staff recommends approval of zoning docket 4818, subject to eight provisos.
Thank you. The first proponent, Cherie Timmer.
If I could let Ms. Bayham, who's also the applicant, go first, and then I'll follow her. Is that okay with you?
Sure. Brandy Bayham. Very good.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Brandy Bayham, and I'm just going to tell you a little bit about myself, 2005 North Broad Street. I'm the owner and operator of Brandy's Restaurant and Bar. Of course, I'm here in support of the project. I'm a lifelong resident of New Orleans, and particularly of the 7th Ward. I have worked throughout New Orleans, and also the 7th Ward, in restaurants and bars for about 20 years now. My mother, or the grandmothers, all are from the 7th Ward. My intention for this area, and my vision for this area, is to bring the locals, the visitors, and as well as the neighborhood people together in camaraderie for entertainment purposes, and to have a good time, basically, with comfortable surroundings and environment. I'm in support of the extended hours because traditionally, this place has always had that. So, it is — I think it's imminent for my success, for this place to become — to be successful, for me to be able to have the live entertainment, as well as the extended hours, because this is what the customers have been used to at this particular site. I am, like I said, a resident of this area forever, from New Orleans, from the 7th Ward, and I just want to bring a little bit of entertainment and camaraderie with all the people in New Orleans, all the visitors, and pretty much, that's it.
Thank you. You can take it in whatever order you would like. Just let us have your name, and I'll pull the card as you go.
Thank you so much. I have to leave, that's why I have another appointment engagement. But I am invested, interested in the community.
Can you give us your name and address?
Deborah Davenport.
Got it.
Okay, 31 — 313331 Brooksville Street. Okay, I'm also — I have vested interest in the neighborhood and in the community. My parents first purchased in the community in 1978. So, our property and our family have been in that community since that time. We are very familiar with all of the businesses that are in that community, as well as the new business that's trying to engage in the community. And with that said, understanding and knowing very well the businesses that have been there, and the new business that is coming up, we've never had any issues with any of those businesses or bars that have been at those locations on Broad Street in those corners. So, we are in support of young people, young entrepreneurs, who are making a mark in the city to bring business and revenue and possible employment for other people in the community. So, I'm in support of Ms. Bayham in having her business operate at that location at a feasible time, that she can have the business and the opportunity to make the revenue that she needs to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davenport.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Cherie Timmer. My address is 2661 Grabier Street. I've been working with Ms. Brandy Bayham on her city planning request for several months, and she has been working diligently, communicating with community members, reaching out to the neighbors. As you can see in the materials that were submitted to you, she has received support from many of the neighbors that live immediately on Brooksville's, some on other streets. And she also has had a petition that's also included in your materials, with over 100 signatures of people from the neighborhood who've also visited her business in support. I want to thank the staff for their recommendation of approval of Brandy's Restaurant with Live Entertainment and Extended Hours. And Brandy agrees to many of the provisos, pretty much all of them, other than the ones that specifically relate to the limitation on extending the hours, which I believe are 7E and 8H. 8H also addresses having any kind of live entertainment during the weekdays, which would be Sunday to Wednesday. First, I want to address the extended hours. Part of Brandy's business model, and would give her an opportunity to succeed, would be having that time until 4:00 AM on the weekends, until 2:00 AM on the weekdays. The surrounding businesses are also open late into the evening. This would give an opportunity for people working late nights, service hours, and also people who are visiting the adjoining businesses, a chance to eat at her place. As far as I'm aware, many of the — none of those businesses offer food, a full-service kitchen, later than — at any point in the evening during the week. Also, I just wanted to bring your attention to the request to limit live entertainment to the weekend, specifically having Brandy be able to have entertainment on Sundays, with having brunch, and possibly throughout the week, early into the evening would also be her request.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Lester Jackson.
Good evening. My name is Lester Jackson. I live at 3121 Brooksville Street. I've been there at least 26 years, and I'm also the president of a band-a-plays neighborhood What I've done, I've went and knocked on doors, and I asked those what they feel about this business. Out of 28 — no, 38 residents, I only had seven that was against it. Nine of us have actually went to the place and had a good meal. So, I believe that we have to give this young lady an opportunity to let her business flow. Now, if anything comes up that doesn't line up with the rules and regulation of the city, as the neighborhood association, we have the responsibility to be able to go to her in a letter, and let her know that you need to improve this, pick up the trash, or whatever it may be. But we are in favor of business coming into our community. Thank you very much. And I also have some other people that have signed to agree to that.
So, thank you, Mr. Jackson. We can't accept that from the podium, but we appreciate your comments. I may mess up the first name. Charlisse Harrison.
Good afternoon. My name is Charlisse Harrison. My address is 105 Willshire Street. As a member of the community and that neighborhood, we believe that Brandy's business is something that is needed and desired. A lot of the restaurants in the area are fast-food restaurants, and I'm one who actually eats out four to five nights a week. So, I'm often having to try to Uptown and Mattery to get a good meal. And this would be something that, as a neighbor, I can support her, because again, I eat out four to five nights a week. Ms. Bayham is — I know her both professionally and personally, and I think that she runs a great business and will be good for the community. And I hope you approve her request. Thanks.
Thank you. Jeffrey Farhad. I might have missed a letter in there.
Hello, Jeffrey Farhad. I'm actually the owner of the property that we're here before today, and I own several of the commercial properties adjacent to it in both directions, on Brooksville's and on Broad Street. I'm here in support of Ms. Bayham, because she's been a great tenant, and she has been doing the best she can to bring, you know, her touch of New Orleans to the world. What I can say is that this property has been, and it is part of the characteristic of the neighborhood, to provide live entertainment. And for that reason, I think that that should be a no-brainer. As far as the hours of operation, I believe that, you know, this has been a bar for a long time, and the previous bar owners and operators that were successful there were able to do it with the long hours that generally bars have. So, that being said, I do support Ms. Bayham, and I hope that the staff continues with its recommendations and allows for the extended hours. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of zoning docket 4818? Give us your name and address for the record, since we don't have a card. Thank you.
My name is Julius Kimbrough. 1909 North Broad is my business address. I'm a couple of doors away from Brandy. I've been on that corner at 1909, 1915 North Broad, since 1992. Even before that, at a drugstore at 1900 North Broad. I'm very familiar with the company. It's always been a commercial business there. That was live music, a bar there before I left there, before I got there. And I've been knowing Brandy since she was about 11 years old, so I can speak to her character personally, and I also know that corner very well. There's a 24-hour McDonald's across the street, there's a grocery store across the street that operates 24 hours a day, and two barrooms. So, that historically, it's been a commercial business quarter. I just think that she ought to be afforded the opportunity to succeed as a young person. She also worked for me at one point as a manager, and now is moving into an entrepreneur position. So, I'm in favor of Brandy's desires to operate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other supporters of this matter, 4818? If not, we'll hear from the opponents. Chris Draper. And if I read all the cards, let me see. It looks to me like you have two people seating. Time to you, which would give you six minutes. Let me make sure those people are here. Vicky Lena. I'm getting a nod. And Paolo Barona. Okay, so assuming she comes back, so you have six minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Chris Draper. I live at 2656 Brooksville Street. I am the only person here that lives within 100 feet, 300 feet, or 500 feet of Brandy's bar. Since November the 18th, when Brandy opened, it was like a sledgehammer had hit us. The notion of her operating a restaurant, we were very excited about. However, the intent has never been to operate this as a restaurant. The intent has always been to operate it as a late club, a nightclub, operating into the late hours with very, very loud music. Now, I've heard constantly that Brandy should be able to operate this business just like the prime example, because they're relatively close to each other. The difference is that we have never heard any noise coming from the prime example. The matter was addressed with the ATC. There were two hearings. Brandy was ultimately cited on the 13th of December. She was also cited on the January the 10th. She was fined $2,000, had three suspensions with a 60-day probation period. Also, the city planning department went through and listed five pages of violations. Five pages, to which we're unsure whether or not these issues have been addressed. Now, during the course of this unfortunate event in our neighborhood, and I'd like to make the point, I live within 100 feet. Within 100 feet of Brandy's bar, there are 10 residential units. Prior to Brandy opening up her business, there was one vacancy. Currently, we have five vacancies, so we're becoming like a residential desert in that area. In fact, we have the highest vacancy ratio of anywhere in the entire neighborhood, and that's been because of the effect of the late-night music and the constant violation of the rules and regulations that have caused these people to leave. Now, of those five people that left us, four of them had children. They're no longer with us. During the course of dealing with this matter, we've had confrontations with Brandy's bar. I personally have had a gun pulled on me, and my wife was threatened to have our house burnt down. Brandy also continues to operate out of hours, even advertising those hours on Instagram and Facebook, of which we have evidence. She has flaunted every rule. She has consistently not wanted to operate as a restaurant, but to operate as a late-night club with extremely loud music. On March the 14th, we had an incident where there was a brawl outside Brandy's. One of the people involved in the brawl proceeded to break into a vehicle parked almost directly in front of my house, to my next-door neighbors as well. Fuel was thrown into the vehicle, and it was satellite. The entire vehicle burnt, literally, in front of our eyes. This sort of attitude, and what Brandy's brings to our neighborhood, is absolutely a page out of the Wild West. I wouldn't believe it if I hadn't have seen it myself. Now, like I said, I'm the only resident here within 100, 200, or 300 feet, so I can directly attest to the issues that her bar has brought to our neighborhood. Further to that, I would like to state that, in addition to constantly advertising hours of operation that are now out of limits or outside the scope of her business rules, she has not contributed anything to our community whatsoever. The parking, Broad Street, median strip has become a parking center. Our driveways have been parked in, parked across, and needless to say, the trash that comes through is incredible. These are not helping our community, these issues related to this business. I would also like to say that of the five vacancies, there's no incentive for people to come in and invest any money to rehab the houses. And lastly, I'd like to bring your attention that six days ago, Brandy Bayham was arrested.
Mr. Draper, that does conclude your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Susanna Burley. And then Meredith Martello is ceding her time to Susanna Burley. So, that's four minutes for Susanna Burley.
Thank you. I'm Susanna Burley. I live at 2706 Castiglione Street, three blocks from Brandy's bar. I urge you to vote no on the conditional use permit application submitted by Brandy's bar. The health, safety, and welfare of our community are compromised because of this bar. Brandy Bayham, the bar's operator, has operated the bar until 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 AM on too many occasions to count. I've gotten out of bed in the middle of the night to figure out where the noise was coming from. I live across St. Bernard, and it was coming from Brandy's bar. When people have driven by to document this, they've been threatened by violence. Brandy has a record, her most recent offense being May 2nd, 2018. Her son, Montreal Bayham, who helps operate the bar. His most recent record is December 26th, 2017. And her friend, Wayne Griffin, who helps operate the bar, and was most recently arrested on December 22nd, 2017. He is also the one who threatened arson to our neighbor. The volume of Brandy's bar is louder than what is allowed by law. It's pounding. It shakes our houses. It makes it very difficult to sleep through the night, which is very rough when you have a five-year-old at home. The crime outside the bar is compromising our general sense of safety. Just a couple of weeks ago, the police reported the illegal discharge of a firearm outside the bar during the day. This is not a restaurant. This is a bar. And it has everything that comes with a late-night bar that is run by an irresponsible owner. Please know that I'm not anti-business, and I'm not anti-nightclubs in my neighborhood. I love the prime example, which is located next door. They're excellent neighbors. They don't disturb the community with noise, parking issues, or crime. But I ask you to ask yourselves, if you lived within a few blocks of this bar, knowing that the operator has flagrantly disregarded the law thus far, and knowing the company that she keeps, would you trust them to operate the bar as a restaurant that adheres to the law? Zoning is forever. We cannot live with this forever, so please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Stash Kozlowski. Okay, so you cede your time to Mr. Draper. So, Mr. Draper, I cut you off at six minutes, because I only had you and two other cards. So, Mr. Kozlowski had a chance to speak, but he's ceding his time to you, so if you'd like to take his spot, you get two minutes.
Thank you very much. I'd like to reiterate the point that the previous speaker and myself live in a very close proximity. We've been witness to all of these events. I'd also like to make another point, and that is, one of the speakers, for Brandy's, Lester Jackson presented himself as the president of our neighborhood association. That is a total misrepresentation and falsehood. He is not. How he can come here and present himself as that is mind-boggling to me. Needless to say, he doesn't live anywhere near Brandy's or in a close proximity. Obviously, when one operates a licensed establishment, one has a responsibility to adhere to the rules. Ms. Bayham has demonstrated since day one that she's not operating under the rules. The violations have been unbelievable. The people that she's associated with are just mind-boggling, and the issues that we've had to face have just been absolutely extraordinary. So, I request that you consider this seriously, because if you're in our shoes, living in this proximity, faced with these issues, there is no way that you would be in support of this operation, having those kind of hours, being run by a person with the type of track record that she has. And I will reiterate also, it was only six days ago that Ms. Bayham was arrested driving drunk at 5:49 AM in the morning. Quite a prerequisite for running a bar. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Draper. Ms. Timmer, you have six minutes total for rebuttal. And I'm going to assume that the proponents would cede their time to you, so you get six total minutes, or you can divide that any way you all see fit, two minutes per person or cede any time.
It's going to be mostly me, if you don't mind.
Very good.
Mr. Steg, Commissioners, I'd like to address the relevant complaints expressed by the opposition. Specifically, when you first opened this meeting, you spoke to the necessity of comments to be specifically relevant to the matter that we're discussing. So, I'm only going to discuss those. First, I want to talk about the people who are in proximity that have said that they are in support of the project. I just want to reiterate that in your materials, you received almost, I think upwards of 20 letters from people who have literally live right next door. I also have a letter in my possession from the lady who, I don't know if I can rotate this, but who lives right behind Brandy's, attesting to the fact that she has not heard noise, and when she has had an issue with Brandy as far as bass or anything, that she has — Brandy has specifically addressed it. She also stated that when she's had any issues with parking, she's been able to easily discuss with Brandy. I don't really want to go into anything with the correlation between any vacancies that exist in the neighborhood in relation to Brandy's, because I've had Mr. Julius come from the prime example stating that he's known Brandy for decades, personally attest to her ability to be a businesswoman and support the community. Also, I want to reiterate that the provisos that have been supported by staff specifically ask for not only a plan for security, but also a plan for noise abatement, which both have to be submitted by Brandy before she will receive her final permits. Brandy agrees and holdhardly supports those recommendations, because she wants to be a good neighbor. Furthermore, I want to also add that she has been cleaning, she's had a cleanup plan, and she also wants to work with the adjoining other business owners, Mr. Julius, who is here today, the owner of the showcase. There's also a gas station directly across the street that's open 24 hours. There's also a gas station directly across the street that's open 24 hours, a McDonald's that's open 24 hours. She wants to work with them. So overall, Brandy supports the approval that the staff has recommended, and what we're asking right now, what we are debating, is the time that Brandy's would be open. So if anyone, I don't know if you all have any questions regarding specifically the time, but I'm willing to answer that. What she's asked for is 4:00 a.m. on Thursday through Saturday and 2:00 a.m. on weekdays.
Mr. Hughes.
Ms. Teemer, first of all, have you or the applicant had any chance to engage with any of the neighborhood associations or any neighbors in the immediate area?
Yes, Mr. Hughes, we have. Mr. Jackson, who is here from the Havana Place Neighborhood Association. I also submitted in my report that I spoke personally with Mona Lisa Salloy, who is the president of the Seventh Ward Neighborhood Association, and she said that she also supports Brandy's business.
And then, I guess, to staff, the applicant submitted their desired hours, and staff and their provisos went with different hours. Can you maybe speak to that? And then also on proviso 8H, can you speak to the loud music, I'm sorry, the music only being on those specific days?
Sure. So at this location, a restaurant is permitted by rights. The two things that require approval here are, one, hours that are longer than what's normally allowed, and so the proposal here is 4:00 a.m. on weekends, so Thursday through Saturday, 2:00 a.m. on weekdays. We are recommending essentially two hours earlier every day, so 2:00 p.m. on, excuse me, 2:00 a.m. on weekends, 12 o'clock midnight on weekdays. The other component is that a restaurant is not normally allowed to have live entertainment as a secondary use by right that requires conditional use approval. As a staff, we're comfortable allowing that on weekends, but not on weekdays. And so the common thread there is that this is a mixed-use district. It allows for fairly intense commercial uses, but it also allows for a lot of residential uses, and the neighborhood surrounding it is predominantly residential. And so there's a need to balance the two. And so customarily, you know, there's an expectation that you will have a greater intensity of use at a restaurant, particularly one with live entertainment, on weekends, and we want to make allowances for that. But if that's a sort of every-day-a-week, seven-day-a-week sort of thing, the sort of continuous activity of that is going to have some impact on neighbors, which is beyond the scope of what we're comfortable with. And so to really strike a compromise that balances the needs of a mixed-use district with a sort of high-intensity orientation with the needs of the surrounding neighbors, we think that more limited hours and restrictions compared to what has been requested is appropriate.
And so in light of that, Ms. Teemer, can you just explain what the hesitance is on your part with that?
Well, I want to start by saying that when the applicant first made, when Ms. Bayham first made her application, she did, the staff assumed that she was making that as a bar, right? And when we got the response, it was approved. So I just want to reiterate that the reason why we're going for it as a restaurant is because that's what she intends to be the majority of her business, is the restaurant. Secondly, what I would like to say as far as the hours, many, pretty much every other establishment in that area is open until 4:00 a.m. or later during the weekend, and 2:00 a.m. or later during the weekdays. For example, the Prime Example is open until 3:00 a.m. during the week and 5:00 a.m. on Saturdays. The showcase is open until 4:00 a.m. every single day of the week. Poor Boys, which is on St. Bernard Avenue in a similar corridor, is open until 4:00 a.m. every single day, except Sundays, they close at 2:00 a.m. The Goat, which is at 1301 St. Bernard Avenue, which is also a similar corridor, is open until 4:00 a.m. on most days and 5:00 a.m. on weekends. So it's not that Ms. Bayham is trying to compete with those businesses, but because of the nature of her business, because she's going to be offering food at a late night, this is her opportunity to give people what they're going to be looking for at that hour because the neighboring businesses do not serve food.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Brown, Commissioner Brown, did you have something, or I had a question also?
I do, but whoever wants to go first. Your neighbors are alleging some pretty serious violations, citations, suspensions, et cetera, that have impacted their life since Brandy's has been open. Can you speak to those?
I don't know. The opposition didn't cite, I know that they're speaking about the ATC, and I can address that. The criminal matters that they cited, I'm not aware of, and I don't know, they didn't cite any specific dates or times, so I don't know if I can respond to those. But as far as the ATC, when Brandy first opened as a restaurant, she was under the impression that it was still able to operate under the time that Spice Bar and Grill was previously. And obviously, not being informed is not an excuse.
Let me reel this back in just a bit. What are her current hours of operation?
Currently, she closes at 10:00 p.m.
Every night?
Monday through Sunday.
Every night? You're closed at 10:00 p.m.? Okay, I'm speaking to Ms. Teemer.
Let me hold it.
I'm actually speaking to Ms. Teemer.
This is, Commissioner Brown is questioning, and the only person to speak is the speaker who she directs her questions to.
Yes. Brandy has been open until 10:00 p.m. every day.
And she closes at 10:00 p.m.? I know she's open at 10:00 p.m., but does she close at 10:00 p.m.?
Monday through Sunday. And...
So let me ask a supplemental question.
You can answer, you can come up here.
Where is she operating from when people say she's operating?
I'm going to clarify for you. Monday through Wednesday, I'm not open Sunday at all. Monday through Wednesday, I close at 10:00 p.m. I open up, I was opening up at 12:00 a.m., 12:00 p.m., I'm sorry, 12:00 p.m. in the afternoon until 10:00 p.m. in the evening time. This is all after I was fined by the ATC, and they suspended my liquor license. I opened up, they suspended my liquor license for a month. I started opening up earlier and doing exactly what they told me to do. I was a bit ignorant when I first went in, so I didn't know that there were time constraints like that. So the first two weeks, two weekends, I was operating in a capacity of thinking I can operate that way. I didn't know it would not.
At this location, this exact location?
Yes, yes. I've only been open since November 18. I have never had one fight about, at my bar. I've never had any of these things that these people are saying, these are made-up fabricated things.
So, hold on, let's see if that goes to Commissioner Brown's questions as opposed to something else.
Yeah, it does. I was simply asking what hours you are operating currently and at what location.
Saturday, 12 o'clock. And now I open up at 4:00 a.m., I mean, 4:00 p.m., I'm sorry, until 10:00 p.m. Monday through Wednesday, and Thursday through Saturday, 4:00 p.m. until 12:00 p.m.
Okay, but have you been advertising later hours?
Have not. No, ma'am.
So I'm going to ask, I'm interested in that dialogue, but I'm going to open something up, but it has the possibility to get out of hand, and so I'm going to impose some rigid rules. The commission, the public hearing part is over, but the commission obviously has some questions, and we can ask either the proponents or the opponents. I'm going to ask the opponents to give me one person and answer a specific question that I have. If anybody else has a question of an opponent, that's fine, too. And then I'm going to come back and ask you guys a question in a minute. I'd like to hear you speak to the specific statements of the hours of operation of the restaurant since it's been open since November 13, or whatever the date was.
Yes, sir.
And the fights and noise, only those issues, hours and fights and noise. And try to be brief because we have a whole auditorium of people.
In the package that was submitted, you'll see a sheet that has a list of all the hours from November 18 through to January 7. The first top part was prior to the ATC hearing, where almost 90% of the time, she was open till 4:00, 3:00, and 5:00 a.m. in the morning. After the hearing on December 13, she continued to operate, and I also have here an advertisement on Instagram and Facebook where she is advertising the false hours, that is, hours outside of her permissible hours now on March 9. Now...
And then let me ask you to wrap up because I need to get on to the other people, and I have a question for staff in a minute. So speak to fights and noise briefly, because we've heard there weren't any fights, and I want to have a full opportunity for both sides to present the facts.
Back in 2014, Spice, as it was known at that time, was closed. This establishment was not open until November 18, almost the end of last year. That's over three years. So what happened there before and what is happening now have no consequence.
Appreciate that comment.
Okay. As far as the brawls, we've had countless, numerous occasions where people have come out of Brandy's and had fights in the street.
Since November 13, when she opened?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, actually, it was November 18.
Sorry.
Almost too numerous to mention. The highlights of what I presented to you that are in the package were her son pulling a gun, her boyfriend, associate, worker there, who threatened to burn a house down, and most recently, on March 14, probably one of the most dangerous incidents was the fire that...
In your car, the car in front of your house?
Right in front of my neighbor's house and my house. That's pretty amazing stuff.
Okay, so thank you for that. I'm going to, unless anybody has a question for Mr. Draper. So thank you very much.
One last thing, sir. Ms. Brown had asked, what are her permissible hours? I don't think it was actually answered correctly. Till 10:00 a.m., 12:00 p.m. Sunday through Wednesday, and from Thursday to Saturday, 12:00.
Right, well, and I'm actually going to go to staff, and not to you for that.
Can I?
Go ahead, Mr. Hughes.
And I don't mean to belabor this, but the term "facts" is being thrown around, and I'm only interested in the facts. And I appreciate everything that everybody's saying. It's just a lot of he said, she said from me. Do you have any police reports of these incidents?
We have called the police department many times. We can get you those police reports. One incident that I do recall...
And were any charges ever filed?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No.
Okay. I'm going to ask staff, not anyone in the audience, without extra permission from the planning commissioner or the council, the permitted hours of a restaurant are?
Sunday through Wednesday, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Thursday through Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to midnight.
To midnight, okay. So if this were an application for permission to operate a bar as opposed to a restaurant with live entertainment, would the provisos be the same? Well, let's start with a bit more basic question. Is a bar a conditional use in the zoning classification?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
And so what would its permitted hours be without extension by council or this commission?
The bar doesn't have hours of operation restrictions built into the zoning ordinance.
Doesn't? So it would be by the conditional use, each one an individual application? Okay. Any, Commissioner Green?
Mr. Chair, wherever our discussion goes, I understand the concerns of the neighbors, but we've allowed the public to hear a lot of issues that don't relate to what we're being asked to do today. We're not being asked to shut down Brandy's because her son engaged in activities, no. I'm sorry to say that. That's a terrible thing to say, allegedly, because I don't have anything before me, other than I do have a picture in our package. But I want the discussion to continue, but this commission, unless I'm wrong, does not have the ability to shut down Brandy's.
Very good.
We're being asked for hours of operations to be extended. It's being asked for 4:00 a.m. The city planning commission staff has compromised at 2:00 a.m. I just want to emphasize that there are concerns that neighbors may have that may need to be addressed outside the forum of the city planning commission. We are not an enforcement agency. We are not police. We do not have the ability to conduct the sort of operations that may need to be conducted if you feel that there's activity that's going on. But I just wanted to be said, whatever our vote is, there's a specific request that we're voting on.
Thank you for those comments. Any other comments from the commission or a motion?
I guess, just a couple of comments, and then I'll let one of my fellow commissioners make a motion. On the comments from the neighbors, I think that there was some really good dialogue, especially when, and I'm happy that you pointed to, the people that are good proprietors of businesses in the neighborhood. I think a number of you referenced the Prime Example and Mr. Kimbrough. And to your credit, I'm sorry that Jermaine's was left out. There is food on the block, good food on the block. And I think to Ms. Brandy, I know Mr. Kimbrough referenced you as a former manager at the Prime Example. I would take some of the habits you developed at the Prime Example to your establishment. I think the question on which hours you get, whatever hours you get, they should be better hours. There's a neighbor in a great example in terms of the establishment that you were once a part of that seems to have a fantastic relationship with the neighborhood, and I would hope that you carry some of those habits and practices over to your establishment because, like my fellow commissioner said, this is a question about whether or not you're going to be open. You could be open. It's about what hours you're going to be open, but I would love to have, over time, whatever hours you're given, to have that same relationship to the neighborhood that the Prime Example seems to have earned, not just enjoy, but have earned over the years.
I think, do we have a motion from Commissioner Hughes?
All right, so I'm going to try this, Mr. Chairman. I do echo the sentiments of my fellow commissioner, Commissioner Weberg, and as always, I appreciate the testimony of both the proponents and the opponents. Taking into consideration the testimony, but most importantly, taking into consideration the staff's report, which weighs heavily on my mind, and also taking into consideration the relevant facts, I'm not going to take into considerations accusations of one's criminal record. I think that's a bit irrelevant for me and a little bit offensive. Nonetheless, I'm going to move to approve the staff's recommendation as recommended.
And that's a second by Commissioner Green. I'm going to ask the staff one more question that's relevant to the motion, which is this. If this restaurant is later actually operated as a bar, that is, to say, isn't serving very much food, what is the enforcement mechanism by which someone would determine that they're getting, if the vote goes in favor, they would have a conditional use to operate a restaurant? If it's not a restaurant, what are the means by which that is measured? Is it dollars received, square footage devoted to space? What is the measure, and how is that then enforced?
So there's a couple of measurements. The primary distinction is that a restaurant has at least 50% of its revenue coming from non-alcoholic beverages and food, and the other 50% or less coming from alcohol. So that's number one. The question is whether that balance is met or not. Also, because this would be regulated by provisos that would become part of the ordinance, the hours of operation, things like the security and operations plan, the other conditions of that ordinance would have to be met. And so if the restaurant was not meeting any one of those various requirements... And so if the restaurant was not meeting any one of those various requirements, it would be in violation of its conditional use ordinance.
Okay, that's a very clear answer, thank you. Any other comments on the motion? And if not...
Yes.
Commissioner Lund.
I'd ask the staff, why, could you explain again why you felt that needed to be a compromise about the time being requested?
Yeah, so the MU1 district is a mixed-use district. It's within what's called the commercial center. So the idea is that unlike, say, Magazine Street, which has a different zoning designation, and Magazine Street's zoning designation is neighborhood-oriented, MU1, MU2, other districts in that tier, which are that commercial centers, are designed to accommodate people coming from throughout the city, and they allow a broader, more intensive range of commercial uses. So the commercial uses you see there can include hotels and things that you wouldn't see on Magazine Street or Oak Street or other corridors with different designations. And so there's an expectation sort of baked into the zoning regulation that you'll have these more intense commercial uses there. On the other hand, the other side of the equation is that it's a mixed-use district, has a residential component, has residential uses all around it. And so while, you know, four hours above the baseline allowance in the zoning ordinance is beyond what, as a staff, we're comfortable with, sort of the midpoint, two hours later than would normally be allowed by right, and live entertainment solely on the weekend seems like an appropriate balance to us.
But it would seem that the best option to be consistent with the master plan would be what was already determined to be the hours that are in MU1 district. Why would there be a need to modify it? Why would you do it?
You know, I think the zoning ordinance says you can do additional things through the conditional use process, and so there's a, you know, public hearing before the planning commission, ultimately a legislative decision made by the city council. So I think we at a staff level are comfortable with what we've recommended, but, you know, the CZO condeploys this going through a public process.
Right, okay, thank you. So I'd just like to say, then go ahead and say that I believe that the way that the comprehensive zoning ordinance that was so deliberately and thoughtfully produced is the optimal, and we should stay with what we've already worked hard as a city to develop. Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Before I vote, I would like to be clear that I'm looking at this correctly. We are, this is not just extending the hours of operation, this is an application for a conditional use for live entertainment, which is why they want the extended hours. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, I am probably not going to support the motion on the floor, simply because, and what Commissioner Lund was talking about, the well-thought-out process of the CZO that we went through. Also, the conditional use should be thought of something that is allowed only in those circumstances, where the land use that is being permitted is not too intrusive on its adjacent neighbors, and unless it can be mitigated by the conditions in the recommendation. And hearing what I've heard today, I'm not sure that we can totally mitigate those, given the operator's history here and what the closest neighbors in proximity are saying has intruded in their lives, so I can't support the motion.
Is there no other comments?
I had a question for staff. So if, in fact, we grant the extended time, and she proves to be a good neighbor with the extended time, if she wanted to extend it further to the 4:00 a.m. of her original quest, request, what is that process, and how long does she have to wait?
It's basically a reapplication. So the same application cannot be resubmitted in two years, so there would basically be a two-year period where she would be subject to whatever hours are approved, if any hours are approved. And then once two years have passed, she or any subsequent owner of the property could apply for an amendment to the ordinance to allow greater hours of operation at that point.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission?
Yes, I'd just like to add a comment, and Commissioner Brown is correct. I was emphasizing more of the hours. It is also the fact of live entertainment. And maybe it's because I'm somewhat familiar with this area, the fact that this previous use of this was a, you know, this entire area includes 24-hour establishments, it includes, over the years, just an identification as, in a way, an entertainment district on Broad Street, which happens to have residences behind it. And in this particular instance, we're being asked to single out, to deny an ability to extend hours in an area where the establishments in the area have extended hours. But I'm struck by, and I don't know where I think the vote is going to go, I'm struck by the owner of the establishment across this way, who welcomes the competition and who is in a position, I think, to make a difference here, to make sure that this facility is run right. He doesn't want to do anything, I think that he'll call if necessary, he doesn't want to do anything to hurt his establishment, and so I appreciate the fact that Mr. Kimbrough was here. But I just want to reemphasize, I guess, my own point, that we're not asked to weigh right now whether or not this particular establishment is an establishment that we would necessarily go to dinner for, even though I probably would. But at the end of the day, the fact is, is that we're being asked to extend hours and to allow live entertainment, and I think that the compromise that was reached by our staff after a great amount of deliberation, plus reviewing what's here in place. We do have, on the other side, petitions from a good number of people who say that this is fine, because this person has lived in the neighborhood and is a part of the community. I recognize the opposition's concerns. I would like that to be an enforcement issue where there is criticism, if you will, or at least dialogue with those who can enforce, versus us making a blanket decision that a small change like this can't take place.
There being any, no further comment then?
Yes, I would like to make a comment.
Yes, Commissioner Lund.
So I think the major decisions were made when the CZO was written, that this is the direction that we would like to move in. So regardless of if it is a nighttime entertainment district, this was what was determined to be the direction the city would like to move in. So to look at it from the view of why not let one person do what the others have, are doing around preceding the CZO, is making that more important than the work that was done to create the CZO, and in my opinion, that is more important, and that's why I can't support it.
Thank you for those comments. Any further comments on the motion? If not, we'll call a question. Four yays, three nays, I'm going to explain that. We need to get five votes in one direction or the other to have an action, so that at present, four yays and three nays is no action, and the matter would go up to the city council with the city planning commission having taken no action. Unless there's another motion to be put forth, then that's the end of zoning docket 4818. At the end of all of that, it goes down as an official no action.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank the members of the public, the members of the community who came, the business owners, the residents, for expressing their opinions and also participating in the meetings that have been held relative to this matter. I think that the deliberations by staff and also our commission and the neighbors were good.
And I would echo that, even though it was an emotional and difficult issue, it was civil and respectfully done. Zoning docket 5218.